It is six o'clock, Tuesday, January 24th, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting of the Montgomery City Council into session at this time. We do have a quorum present. Four members are here, but the TGA Wilson is not here this evening. And the administration is here in full force. And we appreciate everybody from the outside and those who attended tonight to our meeting. Thank you for being here. We ask that you silence cell phones to avoid any interruptions to our meeting as we proceed. And at this time, I'd like to ask us to stand in the invocation and pledge to the flag. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the many blessings we're able to see in our city, in our families, in our state, our nation. May we be grateful for all things and give all things and all glory to you, for all good things come from you. We ask your presence upon us in our meeting, guide us in wisdom, and may we be prudent with all that you give us to be stewards of. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen. To the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state under God, one nation.
Visitors, citizens forum tonight. We have one signed up, three names, but Logan Hunter, Brad Farmer, and I guess they're representing Pure Energy. Is that correct? Go ahead and stand to the microphone. You'll introduce yourself and give us an address if you could, or who you represent will be fine. And you have three minutes. Once you start.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Logan Hunter. This is Bradley Far. We represent Pure Energy. We are an option that is becoming more popular out here in the city of Montgomery. We represent Pure Energy for solar. We do a lot of work with residents out here in energy utility territory. We're here by invitation under Mr. Casey Olson. We wanted to come out here and just make a statement and let you guys know that we understand that there's been a lot of companies that have come out here from out of state that have spread a little bit of misinformation about what's going on, the opportunity and benefits that solar can present. And so we're here to let you guys know that there is, there is an option that we are a Texan company. Our operations headquarters was founded in San Antonio. Bradley and I are the regional managers for the greater Houston area, so we are the ones that are meeting with homeowners and explaining the benefits of how this can help each individual home. And we use Texan-made panels, made in Vacher out of San Antonio as well. So we like to keep Texas solar here in Texas. And like I said, we're actually going around and talking to a lot of homeowners, and so we're just here to help you guys out with the rising costs that have been affecting everyone of us. And just add on to that, just because, yeah, there's a lot of missing disinformation about kind of how it works, and there have been people that haven't gotten something that is actually beneficial for their life, that we're here as a resource to help people understand it, because not every home does benefit from it. That's something that is kind of important that we feel homeowners should know, is that just because someone knocks on your door doesn't mean that solar will actually be beneficial for you.
Awesome.
So anyways, we'll leave information, contact information, we'll be meeting with a lot of homeowners. If you guys see our trucks, if you'd like to wave us down, if you'd like to speak with Bradley and myself, we can, these two appointments, we just come to your home, we share that information in about 15, 20 minutes with the homeowners. And like I said, we are the ones that are, they're going to be going around the neighborhoods and helping out homeowners and stuff. And last of all, we just wanted to create a relationship with you guys so that we can make sure we're doing things the right way, respecting the workplace and the Texas flag. And then if there's anything ever that you want, we'll just know where to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do y'all have a business card?
You know what? Due to COVID, that is actually something that we've kind of stopped doing. We do have digital business cards and we need contact information. If we need to, we can write up something that will have just our information in general. We need your review. We switched to those little QR codes just to get a lot of the physical card. It became a little harder to handle.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Under the consent agenda, item number one is approval of the following city council meeting minutes. A, city council meeting minutes from 12:00, 13:00, 22. B, city council meeting minutes, 1:00, 10:00, 23. What's the council's pleasure? Would you take these individually or together?
Together.
Together? Good with that. So do I have a motion to approve both A and B?
I make a motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes from 12:00, 13:00 to 22, and also the city council meeting minutes of 1:00, 10:00, 23.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Carol. Motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item one, consent agenda, let it A and B say yes. And you opposed, say no. And we will approve consent agenda. Consideration possible action, item two, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Montgomery, Texas, amending section 57 of chapter six, alcoholic beverages, and section six of chapter 64, street festivals of the city code of ordinances, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict, in conflict therewith, providing a severance clause and Texas open meetings clause, and providing an effective date. Mayor, I'll turn it over to Chief.
Mayor, now, so looking at chapter six, 657, the existing Montgomery ordinance, chapter six, section 657, allows consumption of beer, wine, and designated area of the city during events or festivals. The proposal is to amend this ordinance to allow special events, applications to request a waiver permit for the consumption of alcoholic beverages as well in that same designated area. And the reason why we're doing this is because we're trying to get into compliance with what this ordinance is saying. They've been serving alcohol all along, and our decision is beer and wine, when they could sell alcohol in festivals. So in order to make it right for what we're doing, we just wanted to add this waiver to the ordinance.
Okay.
Sir? It's been, it's been a while coming. We talked about it for a while, haven't we? Okay. Any new questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt the ordinance as presented.
A second.
And a second motion by Casey, second by Pat. Motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of adopting item number two as stated, say yes. And you want to oppose, say no. And the motion carries. Item number three, presentation and discussion of a proposed metal-rigged single-family residential subdivision and the creation of a public improvement district for the development. Thanks, Mayor. I'll turn it over for adoption by Mr. Corbin.
Mayor, council, do you have any question in your bag? Again, you heard this last fall. This is a proposed residential residential neighborhood just last of 2049. We launched off Hartley. It's about a 28-acre site. We initially had a purpose and feasibility study, some of the city's lots. They've since come back and asked for consideration of 60s. The developer is here, would like to talk a little bit about the land plan kind of widely, and the market, and the mechanics have changed what the plan is, as well as to talk about the idea of establishing a PIT or a public improvement district that would help them with their financing for the infrastructure. With that, I'll go to Marjorie Cox, and she can talk more about it. I'll say, just as a reminder, there is no action needed. It was just a discussion between the developer and the council to understand more about the project.
Thank you so much, Dave. Appreciate working with you and Chris and Catherine, the folks at WGA and the other folks. Appreciate your guidance, and we're really looking to potentially bringing in this project to the city of Montgomery and impacting and improving the land in order to create more housing within the community and increase the tax base. So just to give you a little bit of background on our development company, our family is a residential and commercial land development company and has a four-year history in the Austin County and Montgomery County. My folks moved to Delago about 30 years ago. We built a home there, and we spent many, many enjoyable holidays and good times around the lake in the area. They were very active in the community and we knew that St. James' was a church and the promise of salvation army and gave a light, quite a bit of time back to the community. And in 2005, we first developed two or three of Montgomery. Those were best next to the schools. We built, we developed that and provided that, the 38 homes in the current tax value is $79 million. Utilities are provided by Stanley and MUD. Another project that we did in the Montgomery County area was in Conroe. We bought 35 acres in 2008 and then built out homes and then did the development planning and planning for that. And that created, in fact, about 1046 homes to the community there, about $40 million in tax basis to Conroe and the other entities. So part of that, we had buried about two to three times out in my blog, used in the 1990s and 2000s in the Austin County. I've worked, worked with property security in addition to this, and I recently worked with the city of Houston and managed the real estate department of 64 Houston Public Forces. And so all of the real estate that I manage were street investments and water lines and sanitary lines and stormwater drainage. So this is kind of a, kind of a walking area for me to understand and know, and they currently also manage. We're a furniture company, manage the real estate investments, and a true company worth about $5 billion. So this is a investment, you know, for our family and for us to proceed with. You know, there, we looked at another property in Montgomery several years ago, had that under contract, went through the same process about five or six years ago, which was too early in the development lifecycle. We couldn't get any builders that we worked with, they made out as far as Montgomery. We had to move on. We stayed in contact with many owners in the area and then had a willing seller at this point, and still have the 28 acres under contract subject to the ability to develop it and benefit the existing property owner, benefit the developer and home builder. So we know that the zoning for this particular area for 20, up to 28 acres is subject to R1 zoning, 75-foot lots, and we had a plan, we had a land plan for that, we're moving forward. As the market shifted in summer, when the Federal Reserve chair began to increase the prime rate to slow down inflation, that also increased interest rates for home buyers, slowed down home buyers, slowed down home building and development. And so here we are, six months later, the home builders feel like we'll still be in a cycle for another potential eight year. Our project will take nine to 12 months to go through the planning and engineering, and our engineers have worked with the TGA for the engineering, and then the development construction would happen in that second year period. So we're really looking at having lots available in two years, because, just strictly because of the timeline. The city had, over a few years ago, put together a comprehensive plan for land planning in the community and trying to meet the needs of the community, just in terms of housing and transportation. And so I've got on my document that I passed out, just some of the statistics that were quoted in that document, and we feel like our project would meet the needs. Some of the, some of the comments that the community leaders from Montgomery and all of the professionals that were part of that community engagement, talked about the cost of living in Montgomery is high. So if we are going to develop at 75-foot lots, that, that brings a higher value home, and so that keeps a high value. And then there was also perceived a gap for affordable housing for families that consist, you know, teachers, police, and others that will not be, you know, guided by that 400,000 to 600,000 home price market. So in a benefit of the 60-foot lots, we'll keep that average sales price in the 400,000 range. Any larger lots would be a higher value, would result in higher value of the land. And a few other items that were in the plan, was just indicated, an increase in population. Montgomery would have a command of 500 new units over 20 years. So we think this, this potential development would meet that need. There's also another project that we wanted a few years ago, and that same price point, 60-foot lots at the same price point, and those will be sold out in the next two years, you know, our probably. So, so that just gives you some, some information from the market. We met with the city with David and team a few months ago to conduct the pre-development meeting and kick off this development. We had some discussion then about what would the price would be, the feasibility study indicated where we would tie into utilities. And as our engineers put together this proposed cost for development, it just is not a profitable development unless we can have that reimbursement, you know, for the public infrastructure. So it's just an economic situation, the, the cost of land has gone up in the last 20 to 30 years. Other developments, you know, within the Montgomery city limits and that have been annexed, those owners have owned those lots, have put out land, never 23 or 40 years, up to back into the 1980s. And so the basis in that land is much lower than maybe 5,000 or 10,000 acre, we're going to take hold of for 40 years. You know, we're, we're paying current market value of property owners that were acquiring land from, not market value, and I support the sales at market value, but when we look at the cost of land, at the cost of development, it's just not going to be toward you, and thus, and likely not with other developers either, because, you know, those are two static numbers that don't, you know, there could be no savings there. So we're proposing to create that PIT, which is part of the state legislature, it's in the state constitution, as a special improvement district or public improvement district. There are 13 other PITS in Montgomery County, in Magnolia and Conroe, and this is a method for there to be an assessment, you know, on the home that would reimburse the development of this cost for infrastructure. So that would include utilities like the water lines and sanitary lines, tool and water detention, and streets. There are other methods, you know, for similar reimbursement, if a property is within a county or ETG or an incorporated area, and that would be a special purpose district, and those would sell bonds. Another method is a MUD, municipal utility industry, and again, those are assessments based on property that allow the developer to sell bonds and create the value to build those infrastructures. So those are a few of the methods. Again, there are PITS, and there's one PIT in Montgomery so far for a commercial development. This would be a proposed or requested for consideration for a PIT, you know, for residential projects. And then as it shows on the council packet, there would be an assessment for the property owners for 25 years, 17, 15 per year, and that would be a place of the assessment from a MUD for special purpose district. So the, the chapter 372 of the local government code outlines the process of how to do the PIT in this case. And so we would recommend that, we would follow along with that process if the city council were going to kind of consider that. So the questions, I think that came, you know, to city council, you know, from the city representatives, just about why we would do this, and I think that gave you some insight into the purpose for a PIT, and then where we are just in terms of the cost of land, the cost to build it out, and just that, that need or that requirement for the reimbursement of the public infrastructure in order to create this development, create the tax value. So speaking with one of our builders a couple of days ago, they got, you know, they made projections if this project were to go forward for a home size around 2,800 to 3,600 square foot, and they valued those around 432,000 to 489,000. Those fit in with our current, you know, current market information. So according to Houston Associates and Realtors, the, the sales over the last 12 months have an average sold, within the city limits of Montgomery, only 397,000, and the current mortgage within the city of 438,000. So that price point fits in with the current trends of certain areas. And again, if we were to look at the 75-foot lots that would drive that value of, you know, 10 to 20% from that amount. So there are a couple of other, you know, there were some questions related to, you know, the request for variance. There were a couple of other variances that came through and were granted over the last few years. So in October 2022, FTI had proposed a land plan and annexation of the May retract, and those lot sizes were refi by 2020. Count, count Precrossing was prior to that, and those lot sizes are 60-foot lots, and those are developed, had vehicles, for property owners, developer, the community. There was the tax by the city of Montgomery and Montgomery County, 1160. So that would make that taxing responsibility consistent with the project that we propose. And then the flat, the hills of County Creek, over here by the high school and apartments and storage units, those were, that platform was created in 2017 with 50-foot lots, and in the other sections, had lots, 25 to 60 foot. So we think our request for variance from 75 to 60-foot lots meet the market, it, you know, establishes, you know, the kind of a, another price point, another size, fills the mix, you know, for Montgomery. And a variance would not be, you know, out of line with what, you know, past approvals, you know, by ordinance by the city. So, and again, the, the potential lots will be available in March 2025. We anticipate other developments to be built out by that time, so we think there will be a demand. Questions about the profitability of success? We've kind of run through the company history, and then what would be provided or required, you know, in order to justify the PIT by the local government code. And another question is related to public, the financial implications to the city. The PIT would be a cash flow PIT, and so there would be no city bonds or other debt. The acquisition, destruction, or improvement of water, wastewater, and drainage facilities would be paid by each property owner. And so once the development is completed, all of those costs would be summarized and submitted to an accounting firm for audit, to ensure that the cost met with the development agreement between the city and the developer. Once the homes are completed, the closing would be submitted by our PIT administrator to the city for approval to adopt to the tax rules, and then provided to Montgomery County appraisal district that following year after the January 1st appraisal process. So the PIT would be managed by us, Hazen Hill Associates, and 22 PITS in the special purpose districts in the community at Harris County, Montgomery Counties, and this area. So all of the costs would be really, administrator would be funded by the PIT, so there would be no interest to the city of Montgomery, all of the, I think Oasis has new homes for a lot, that assessment that we presented by the PIT administrator to the city for approval. So, and again, there would be an audit that, that we would fund, and we'll work for the city to review and accept the PIT at that time.
Council have any questions? This is information and only, no action needed, but do you have any questions? All right. We thank you. Item number four, consideration of possible actions regarding acceptance of economic and utility feasibility study for the superior properties development. Thank you, Mayor. I'll turn it over to our city engineers. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is an economic and utility feasibility study that we were authorized to perform at your December 13th meeting. I will walk you through the results of the study, as I've done for previous feasibility studies. So starting on page three of the feasibility study, that's page 30 of your packet, Superior Properties in Texas is a developer who requested we perform this study on a 15.46 acre multi-use tract, multifamily and proposed commercial. This is on the northwest corner of Lone Star Parkway and FM 149, west of Time and Tune and Lawson Street, is most common there. They are proposing 98 multifamily units in duplex style and four commercial reserves. Going through the results of the feasibility study, I will jump to, jump ahead to the introduction section on page four. The current zoning on the property is ID industrial, so as part of their development process, they'll need to read on the multifamily portion to R2 multifamily, and the commercial section to be commercial. Going to the water production section on page five of the study, the estimated water usage is 38,940 gallons per day. So I want to talk a little bit about water plant capacity in the city and future plans for additional capacity. So as we've been mentioning in previous studies, and it is again reiterated in this study, the city has capacity at the water plants today. As development continues to go, there is a need for additional water plant capacity, and this is the same for sewer as well, for both types of facilities, there is a need for additional capacity in the next coming years. The design fees for both, both projects are already included in this year's budget, and will be needing on Friday, the staff to regroup on the capital products plan, bring area up to speed, and then we will be coming back to y'all very shortly with the next steps moving forward to really get this in action to increase the plant capacity for both water and sanitary sewer. But as it stands today, there is capacity in both of your facilities to serve this development. Providing water service to the tract itself, there is an existing 12-inch water line on the south side of Lone Star Parkway. We are proposing that that would serve the multifamily development off a single master meter for the multifamily, because we would treat it similar to an apartment complex that's owned by a single developer with a master meter, and then they would, they would divvy it up from there. We are proposing that commercial sites be served by either the existing six-inch water line along Lawson Street, or there's an existing 12-inch water line along FM 149, and vary just depending on which preserve it is in proximity to the lines themselves. Each commercial building would have an individual who'd be here for the building itself, and then separate tenants' building would be up to the developer. Going over to the sanitary sewer section on the next page, page six, they are proposing 32,990 gallons per day of full buildout. As I mentioned, there's capacity in your plant today, you're currently running at about 46% of your flow. On sanitary sewer side, the requirements from the TCQ is that when you hit 75% of your flow for three consecutive months, you're required to initiate design, you're welcome to initiate design and expansion beforehand, but that's the threshold in the state that requires it. The next threshold is 90% of your waste water treatment capacity for three consecutive months. At that point, you are required to begin construction of an expansion. We're expecting to hit 75% around the first quarter of 2024, and 90% around the third quarter of 2024, so it's a pretty quick turnaround, which is why we're wanting to get going on expansion sooner rather than later, make sure we don't get the city in their mind. Providing sanitary sewer service to this tract itself, we would propose that developer extend a gravity sanitary sewer line along the front of the tracks on the north side of Lone Star Parkway. It would be able to tie into the existing gravity line on FM 149, and then that flow would then go to lift station two. An expansion of lift station two would be part of any waste water treatment and expansion project as well. We did also evaluate lift station seven, and you're following one on page seven of the report now. We evaluated lift station seven, however, because of the elevation at the lift station itself and the property, they would, it would not be possible to get to lift station seven by gravity. Going down into the drainage section, all of the onsite storm sewer will be designated private, including storm sewer lines and detention ponds as well. They will have to follow all of the applicable, of our community drainage criteria standards, and they will have to show, and they would have to submit a drainage study showing that there is no impact on the drainage downstream of the track, that this will, will let the outfall directly into indoor fringe. Going down to the paving and traffic section, the proposed streets interior or to development are proposed to be private with the exception of a proposed cul-de-sac extension of Lawson Street. That would be public as it's extending the public street. They are proposing three access points onto Lone Star Parkway, two for their commercial and one for multifamily section. They're also proposing access onto Lawson Street for both the multifamily and the commercial. However, one note that we made in the feasibility study is that the multifamily access onto Lawson would be for emergency uses only, to be gated with a lock that emergency vehicles can access, but the general populace cannot use. We really think that would be wise to send that much traffic onto Lawson without some special improvements. On that, as far as putting a commercial traffic onto Lawson, we would need an additional analysis to determine if there are any improvements that need to be made at this time. As far as off-street parking, I know that that has been a point of concern on this development. Code of Ordnance requires that each multifamily unit have off-street parking for at least two vehicles, so each unit would be one half of a duplex, and we didn't have a site plan. They are addressing that in the driveway, and I know there are still some other concerns outside of that. On the commercial side, they're, they're proposing mostly office space. concerns outside of that. On the commercial side, they're proposing mostly office space. There's one commercial reserve that has not been finalized for its use. So we also included family dining requirements, which is one space for every six customers as well as one space for each employee. In the development cost section, we have a summary of the costs associated with the development. So we are proposing that they would have a 147,000 estimated water impact fee and about 328,000 in sanitary sewer impact fees. The offsite utility improvements that we have included here are the extension of the sanitary sewer line and then an extension of the water line along Lawson for access to commercial developments as well. The last section of feasibility study is on page nine and we're talking about financial feasibility. So based on the city's current tax rate and assuming a 95% collection, this development would generate about 17,000, excuse me, $19,715 in debt service and approximately $55,390 in operations and maintenance revenue based on your current tax rates as of today. Copy of their site plans, including all the other reports as well as a few other exits that we have included in the feasibility studies.
Did I hear you correct? Lawson will not be a thoroughfare except for emergency vehicles? Is that what you said?
For the multifamily, there would not be general access onto Lawson. For the multifamily access that they have in their site plan, we would have, we would ask them to gate it for emergency vehicles only for the multifamily. Currently, they do have commercial access proposed onto Lawson, but we require them to do an analysis of the actual traffic that they can put onto Lawson.
It's barely wide enough for two cars to pass each other. So I'm concerned about the fact that there's going to be even more traffic.
Also, it comes out on 149 so close to the red light there. I don't, I don't think that, that commercial needs to, I don't, Lawson is not their way in and out.
Right. Yeah. We definitely recognize the current condition of Lawson. So if that is the direction that they go in, there would be some improvements that need to be made to Lawson. We just, we don't know exactly what all that would entail. Something that we'd have to figure out as we go. But yeah, we understand that some improvements will be needed.
So the question is, we understand Lawson is a tough road to deal with, but it is on Lone Star Parkway. Is there something I'm not seeing? Why they wouldn't just flip the buildings around and access them from the Lone Star?
So they are planning to have access points on Lone Star Parkway as well.
Two of them.
Right. There are two, two commercial accesses onto Lone Star Parkway. So not including the third commercial reserve that they have there.
Okay.
So Lawson would not be the only point of access for this.
I'm worried about the community there, the citizens there. It's a really tight area. I'm worried about their quality of life being impacted with commercial vehicles going in and out of there all day.
Right. And this is not necessarily approving their site plan or you're not deciding tonight that they can absolutely have access.
This is just a feasibility report, but I think you're hearing some real concerns there that makes sense for traffic and everything else on 149. And if there's any way that you could steer them clear to not even needing that, sounds like that would be a better plan, maybe?
Yes. So since Lawson is a public street, you have approval from the city. And so council could opt in to talk about that.
Okay. That's good.
Very good. Any other questions?
The other thing is the rezoning from industrial to residential. We would have to rezone that, correct?
Correct. Correct. The property is currently industrial and it would need to be subdivided. The property length as it stands, it would be subdivided by flat and multifamily portion of the zone as such, as well as the commercial.
Okay. So I guess just a statement for council, we have a limited amount of road frontage with commercial property in our small stamp of Montgomery. Rezoning, something that we have very little of already, industrial, commercial, either way, to residential where we have a lot of residential, is not something that's going to be high on my priority list.
I have the same concern. I've thought about it. But most of our Lone Star property is private property, right? On the north end, well, all of it on the north side, right? Or most of it?
On the northwest side, a lot of it is.
And so we don't have a lot of control over that, but I'm with Casey on that big time. That seems more prudent to have, to leave it as commercial development. With that said, we're being inundated already with phase five, you know, Hills Town Creek already, almost adjacent to this, to the one we had before. And then now this one on the corner there. And so we're starting a trend that's concerning for myself and sounds like Mr. Casey Olson as well. And I, and I don't know how the magic thing is, you know, the formula, affordable housing, bigger housing, and then also the economic development versus all the housing that we have coming in, but we need to get a handle on it somehow. Because I'm with him, we need some economic development. We need jobs. We need commercial and industrial space. And it's not that much in simp, I don't, I don't know that there's that many areas now that Fles Morgan is becoming apartment row, you know? I'm just not seeing enough commercial space. And I would like to encourage us to keep an eye on that before it gets away from us. But it does sound like we have some city control somewhere.
Any zoning has to be approved.
Approved, that's right.
Okay. All right. Good questions. I want to entertain a motion to accept the feasibility study as presented.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Motion by Carol. We have second. Second by Cheryl. We have a motion and a second. This motion is debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approval of item four, the feasibility study as presented. Say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no. And the motion carries. Departmental reports, item five, city administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Your packet is very important for me. The past two weeks have been busy. Wasn't really familiar with format of this report, so I figured I would just, I'll wait until the next report to get that done. But I've done a lot, just in reading as much as I can, meeting with as many people as I can, staff, partners. I still have a lot of work to do in that regard. So I'll continue doing that in the next report. It'll be a little bit more comprehensive.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Item six, sales tax report.
This is all some meat. So in your package, you find a report from Sales Runway Incorporated. Great information. It's the first time I've really seen a coverage of a report like this. I'm just going to hit the wave tops. There's a lot of information here. Probably some of it I can't answer, so I'm just going to hit the highlights. So if you go to page two, the first page, you can see we have an increase in the number of users. And we also have an increase, an 18% increase in sales tax receipts since January of last year, which equates to about $51,000 of additional tax revenue. Again, I don't know all the information that's in here, but if you have questions, I'd be happy to get back to you on that. It's just something I can't answer, people. And I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what you guys pull on these reports, other than the increase in numbers of the trends. If that's all I have for that, Mayor.
Okay. Any questions? Still working on a way to drive down the cost of living. Can you take care of that while you're here? All right. Item seven, municipal court report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm on doing reports for November and December of 2022. For November, we had 54 citations. Then for December, it was 60 citations. The collections for November was $22,209.38. And for December, it was $19,764.2. Our total overall in the year was $324,300.05. Any questions for this report?
How is your new employee?
She's doing well. Catching on great.
Good, good. Glad to hear it, Kim.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item number eight, Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have both of the November and December reports in front of you. Happy to answer any questions about either of them. I would like to go ahead and answer a question before it's asked, that why are the Christmas trees still up? So Christmas trees are stored in an equipment shed at Public Works that is currently being moved to another portion of the property. The contractor got started a couple of weeks late. We timed it on purpose to hit at the Christmas season so that the trees were already up. And they are two days into moving that shed now. So I'd say within two weeks we'll have it now. But figured they could sit out and display it a little bit longer just as well as they can sit at the yard.
We like to be Christmasy in Montgomery.
I think they look great with Texas flags on them.
Everything on them now is just the trees themselves. And we have a loft in that equipment shed where they're stored. So as soon as it gets finished, the move that will happen now. Are there any questions on either of the reports?
How was today with all the water?
It was good. We didn't have anything major. Those days always give us a stop to need to go check inlets and check ditches and all that. Of course, we always find some leaves that need to be cleaned out and all that. So, but nothing major at all.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number nine, finance report.
Hey, Councilmen. Can you do the financial report and the actions banking? So I want to read from the email summary that he sent you guys. And I can get back to you with any answers. If you've got some questions, there's about five lots of reserves in the utility fund. We have about eight lots in the utility fund. As you know, our property taxes are all due here the next few days. So the city starts to receive those sometime in March. So our headquarter is going to know once we start to receive this collection. And we also know that we paid two years for the broker 380 agreement this year. It didn't get done last year. The only way to do it is to catch up and get paid. So again, the money that goes out to those is always tied to money that comes in for those, the sales tax and the headquarter side. And at a point worth noting, they're generally our highest sales tax payer, but also our highest applicable tax payer in the city. So on sales tax, again, he mentions that it was already kind of received $534,000 in November, $349,000 in December. We are 12% worth of expenses and we were at 15% of our revenue collected for the year. If I could take any questions back to him, I'd have to do that all over again.
On our debt service payment due coming in March, or will you find out if we're looking okay on that?
I sure will.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Item 10, police report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What you have is a security report. If you have any questions. Each year we set, we set goals and all those goals that we set, we try to make sure we reach each one of those goals. That is not to agree with, in the day I've entered the share of the cost of achieving this area. And we're all looking at the same issue of hiring and retaining people, looking at crime, how crime is changing. So we spoke about those things. And I'm just, I'm proud to say, because we're, we're getting ahead of those things. We've got some agencies here who are down seven, eight officers. At this point, we're down probably about, we'll be down two. We've got three in our pipeline. And that's something that we keep going year. We just keep it going, keep on, keep interviewing and keep talking to people. Because we know across the United States, you say the next 10 years, it'll be, we'll be trying to catch up to 68,000 law enforcement officers. We're talking retirement and we're talking people that you just can't hire because of one reason or another. And part of that, and part of that goes to you guys for helping us and making sure we have the resources to do what we need to do. And so we're thinking outside the box. One of the people that we're going to be hiring, we're going to send that person to the shares academy here in March. So we'll hire that person and we'll start them at a low price salary while they're in that academy. So we're just having to start to think outside the box and make some things happen. That's one of the things that we collaborated on today was how, how do we do that? What's everybody else doing? And so we're, we're heading the curve. And I appreciate part of that, that all the guys do on that. Also, we talked about the, the license plate readers. A lot of people putting up the license plate readers. We've got the license plate readers ourselves. And just last Friday, we had a fellow out of College Station just because he had all those license plates. So we're doing it. It's hitting all across the state of Texas. So those things are really going to reach out. So again, thank Council for all the resources that you allowed and to try and make the city safe.
If I'm correct, the officer that's going to the training came out of your Citizens Academy, if that counts.
Absolutely. Came out of Citizens Place Academy.
That's good stuff. That's growing your own.
Any questions? Answers?
We got no answers, chief. Item number 11, utility operations.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Can you give it to reports? Start off November of 2022. We had District Works, Waterway 3, asking for repairs. The practice of thousands of sites operated outside. Make sure everything's good once repairs are done. Lift station 12 made a power outage. That called the energy out, power restored. Everything was reset operational before the outbreak occurred. We had Lift Station 2 and 7, power outage. Had the same thing. We had all energy out, restored the power. Check the sites. Everything's good. No issues. Lift Station 3, the generator running on. Had to do a clock timer, not shut off. Called the contractor out to fix that. Everything's good. Generator's back to normal operations. Lift Station 2, all of her high level. Lost alarm. Operator got there. Everything was normal. All equipment's running. Yes. Lift Station 4, for the high level, this is to begin to energy working on power lines. Stay around, make sure once the power's on, we have no issues. We were pumping. Did have a water quality call on average at night. Made customer contact. Must have mine, mission customers wanted to click to for me to plug. And Waterway 3, had a coordinator failure to do a blockage. Got the contract out there. Got to fix this same thing.
Just a quick question. Those little bit higher power outages are mentioned here. Was that due to the 149 on and off that we had been through recently? Or is this something that's getting away from us?
It's the on and off. But they're working on the line scheduled.
Working on a scheduled line. So this is not a sign that...
No, sir. No, it's a lot of, they're doing a lot of work. That's too much. Page three, you'll see a wastewater plant full deep filled. Average total flow with the plants, 195,000 gallons. You have four options of your appropriate capacity. Next thing, there'll be discharge limits. You'll pour that perfectly. Next, they did the discharge limits, you know, for that perfectly, no violations of the wastewater treatment plant. Page five, your watering board, to show that a pump thirteen point six million, did two hundred and eighty-nine thousand gallons of flushing. Or so, total of thirteen point three one one million gallons. We were able to build twelve point five nine four, we're got over at ninety-five percent, which is by long, I was probably coming to my fraction. Page six, be a groundwater production. For November, you'll pump thirteen point six million, which is a little higher than this time last year. But of course, I'll thank a lot of the growth down the area too. That will be a trade receipt. Page seven, will be your water accountability, up to ninety-five percent, which is probably not the beginning. Any questions concerning the second floor? We want to December. They call out for Waterway Two for low G S P. Operator that found a low two, not running, needed an electrician out there that night. The officials resolved to put that on line that night. Waterway Two, they had a scheduled surface interruption for energy. Waterproof facility, reset all equipment, no issues after the power was restored. The water quality, Flaxville Boulevard, made a customer contact, flushed the lines, flushed the customer's line. Everything was good on their side before we went in. List station five, a high level call. That will cause a burn if used as a damage phase monitor. Something like a power surge to the site. All was replaced that day and list station was put back online, no further issues. Twelve six, Waterway Two, then List Station three and four. No powers or power outage in the area. I believe that they have another energy scheduled outage. So we said everything, checked all the facilities, makes sure there's no issues. We did have a sewer backup from the elementary school. We had Jeff and Todd, across the midlife stage sewer main. We informed the city, the police department, to make up that mark off. Then we have List Station five and two, power outage. We looked at like this was an actual power outage in the area, unscheduled, one this time. This day outside, so power was restored, bumped down the wet levels, control of the drainage properly. And another water block by two for a well on the ground, operator ready to arrive on site, no issues, just false alarm. And then Waterway Two, no power. I said, I should, this was the three, this may have been another scheduled power outage from energy. And through that line, they run the past two months. Page three, no, have a sewer backup at one thousand two Collie Street. Got a contractor, Jeff Wise, no further issues, much cleared. Waterway three, we had a starter failure on Chattery from the starter. Got energy out, checked the voltage coming in. Did some work, helped kind of resolve that issue for right now. Everything's up and running, just sort of. Now, List Station five, we have a high level. Found a bad phase monitor on lift pump, had to replace the phase monitor. And air tables working on departure, no other issues.
You have any idea what the water well three voltage pole deal might be? Because...
We're, we're checking with the energy train that set up, of those engineers, Mike. Possible we're getting some dirty power coming in. We're working on that, trying to get another power voltage recorder set up. Which we're waiting for confirmation when they're going to be out solved. This, they did contact and we're just waiting for them to call us essentially.
Use what you have to use authority wise to get them going.
Yes, sir.
We, we installed, we had a page show, installed a time delay on that well immediately when we first noticed the issue. As a safety precaution, just to keep it from pumping out. So we, we did have measures in place to keep it protected, but we're trying to get to the root of the problem.
All right. Page four, wastewater twenty-four we filled. Average for the month was two hundred and twenty-four thousand, which we had fifty-six, three point seven capacity. In List Station eleven, we have a spot of five hundred and fifty-seven thousand gallons. So it would have run out for one and a half inches of running, picking the system that day. Page five, the discharge limit, he went to higher explore that day. Don't like no search, just everything was pretty permanent. Page six, for your water report. Total water pump, towards ten point seven point two million gallons. We had flushing of four hundred and eleven thousand gallons. For a total of ten point three zero one million. We sold nine point nine point seven million, we're counting it at ninety-six percent. So a big problem we've been dealing with the past thirteen months. For the month of December, you pumped ten point two six seven million, a little higher than last year, provided file and everything. And then last page, page eight, the water gallon bill, ninety-six percent. Present on, get a count for a good amount of water. Any questions or concerns for the report?
None?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Item twelve, Utility Reports.
Hey, Council. Given your utility reports, I have the one note that I labeled page one fourteen. It says, remember right at the top, it's actually your December report. The utilities, calling in one hundred and fifty-four thousand in the month of December. Permit sixteen thousand, eight hundred. And moving on page one fifteen, page two, the report. There are thirteen accounts that are past the one hundred and twenty day average, which are total of fifteen hundred and forty-nine dollars. And total revenues are thirty-three hundred dollars issued. Fifty-five building permits or building related permits for a month. We have a thousand fifty-three utility accounts. Touching on water usage, you'll see in this report, really where the irrigation was shut off between November and December. In particular, over at Emory Park, is where it's most obvious. The November report was very much like this in terms of the revenues are about the same, one hundred and fifty-six thousand. And utilities, sixteen thousand, one hundred in permits. Permit numbers were about the same. Do you have to answer any questions you have in this report?
What about all the bills that went out that were different? Has that been taken care of and everybody's...
We wanted to ensure that the, that the issue wasn't already. We reached out to N code to get some staffs, some of their staff onsite for training. And one of the things that we've added in is, you know, kind of, it's, they're a very, very big organization. It's very, very tough to get over. And we're not the only city that deals with it. We, many of you know Carl Roche, lives in downtown in the Dompies. So if you didn't know Carl Roche, once he's got the office. He works in the utility building office over in Comro. And in conversations with him on another matter, he offered, said, hey, you know, we'd love to have you over and show you how we're doing things. We'd love to send a clerk over, you know, because cities walk and, you know, work together to solve it. But he said, it's not just because you're a small city. He said, we're a huge city and we face the same challenges with trying to get answers to how to N code in terms of either utility building or on the finance side. So look at, but in terms of managing myself. So where, with regard to the air in the utility building, the work with each customer as they come in, but I don't know any issues at all.
Okay.
From that, we just ran the building, Nikki and the utility girls just ran the building yesterday. We have coming on and looked through it to verify, you know, how our processes, you know, to kind of verify that. There's still some questions coming out of that, but we're certain that data is accurate. Again, it's just a matter of getting N code on site to give us some, you know, some more training. That's not the online training that goes too fast and it's just too personal to be able to really grasp that song.
Thank you.
All right. Item thirteen, City Engineers.
Hi. Good evening, starting on page one twenty-four of your packet. Go through all of these. Running the G L O generator project, so that generator was finally delivered on January eleventh. You see in that photo, the startup was scheduled for this afternoon, but was delayed Thursday due to weather. So hopefully we'll have that generator operational on Thursday of this week. They have a estimate, they came in for about three thousand, five hundred for that project. And that's getting funded through the G L Os, was going through its, its process. The district grading projects on the next page, on MLK, McGinnis Drive, the other G L O project. Again, we have a walkthrough on January the eleventh, contracts, there's some punchless items. One item that came up today that was already on the contract punch list is some of the slow payment is a little bit higher than the natural ground on the lot side. So there's some popping water on one of the lots on McGinnis that wasn't listed already. The contractor will be addressing that, so it's not a cause of problem on our property. Items four and five, old plans for water and spore spanning extensions. We have submitted those plans to Railroad and to Tech Stop for their approval. The downtown, item six and seven, the downtown projects will be water line replacement, transportation plane. We're waiting on the surveyor. We're working through some final survey backups from him to get those going and complete, done what we can until we have that final data. Item eight, the downtown sewer rehab project, so it's reminded us as awarded in December. Or excuse me, this is a previous slide, previous to that, we had a pre-contraction meeting in December. It's pounding mid in the holidays, they're starting to move on site and expected. See what happens, kind of this week with the schedule, but this week, next week, start performing that work. Flaxville Boulevard, wrapping up that design here this next month and give it out to bids. Same with San Andreas for rehab projects and List Station ten improvements. Both of those are, they're wrapping up the survey work. I know there's a question today because some flash are getting sent for properties. So they are wrapping those, that survey work up to complete the design. And again, reminder, List Station ten is funded by Holti Development, so for the property. Item, our page three, our report, page one twenty-six of your packet is, is all the developments that are ongoing. There's a lot of them, as you can see. So in terms of plan reviews, we return comments to Shaq's parking expansion earlier this month. Comments to Montgomery Southern Business Park, new, new building on that property. Dutch Bros, we did just receive back their revised plans earlier this week. So hopefully we'll be able to approve those, they can get started. Montgomery Row, we approved their plans on the thirteenth of this month. Looping Tia, we return comments to them today for their first round of review for their plans. And there's some other minor ones in there regarding forever, no, it's kind of what else everyone's kind of moving at this point. On to page thirteen, see the flat reviews. They're ongoing, that was a little bit quieter this month. We're waiting back on a couple for signature. Item, item four, the development section, so the ongoing construction. So Montgomery Bend, the Holti project over on ten ninety-seven. These are predicted to crack in December, so the site is much different today. They're, you know, ongoing with their clearing work for that project. And we expect that they'll be starting their masquerading, if not through those planes, if they're getting ready to pretty soon. That issue that they came up today, you'll hear about it regarding their lack of, or they had that, but wasn't sufficient. For road protection. And so there was a lot of free that was getting into Terravista neighborhood, clogging the inlet there. We have discussed that with their engineer, with their contractor, they were sending crews out to make it up. And then do different measures that have recurring. Ask them follow up and see if this is actually what they're going to do. Long term, just so y'all are aware, that range that currently goes through Terravista is rerouted and no longer goes that way. So part of their plans, they're constructing a drainage channel along that boundary and then a tension pond at the end. So the water that comes in, coming from ten ninety-seven to the grid into Terravista will be diverted and go out of the property behind Terravista. So this will be the issue. And last page, our report plus last page, the update on testing activities. So based on our last update, they're expecting the terming to happen in March. I have never waiting on contractors, I have one three nine and five. The most star, rain repairs, we'll be reporting with accounting on that. We provided them comments back in December. And I would change the phone calls to get that project started. And last item, under packaging of our report, is updated development map. Just showing all the developments that are ongoing in the city and what phase of development they are in. And that's all I have, so we have a fresh one on.
Are we on target for what we requested for, I think it was the first meeting in February of getting some teeth? So that our city can ask these developers to do what they said they would do?
Yeah, so regarding the dry utility ordinance and that, so we did receive a draft ordinance from the city attorney. Or what did say, draft ordinance, real life ordinance. So we're going through that, it is a big draft to go.
On the map, there's a item that says Home Depot?
Yes.
But nowhere's on your report, is there anything about Home Depot?
It's not. So they, before Christmas, they contacted us, we had a pre-develop meeting with them. They were spinning extra gallons, we have not heard that. So we have seen, we'll, they're on our list to follow up. There's a couple developments that they're not on the list, they have extra agreements, they're just haven't made it past that point. Home Depot was, was one of them, as well as at Auto Parts, they were just beginning to expansion, their existing facility down here. And... Across the street, looking at expansion.
Okay. Discount tire or they...
Yeah, so we approved their plans twice. We, we approved them a couple of months ago. They made slight revisions over the holidays to complete the water meter layout, or if I remember correctly, it was the size. They, they just changed the size from two inch to two and a half inch or something like that. And those were approved, complete back in December as well. I had not heard on what the delays down the shank and ship lease. Those plans are approved over there by the fire station.
Right.
They've been approved for a few months now, but we have not heard and updated and like checked it. Rather than that, we still hold any building permits on that side.
And the discount tire, they do have a little bit to the issue yet. Just within the last few weeks with the shipments, we've not, I haven't heard anything.
Good.
My tires are running thin, they better hurry up. Anything else?
Question, the Buffalo Springs, they call it H two Buffalo Springs Shopping Center?
So that is the, the, where Blue Wave car wash is, that's that side. So Blue Wave is happening, not Blue Wave, but the rest of that side is going to be replanned. So for Popeyes and Dutch Bros, they're splitting one of the parcels and so they're moving the property lines. So that's what, that is related. So on that Friday, between Buffalo Springs and Crowder, there'll be discount tire, they contract Axis Drive. Popeyes, Dutch Bros, and just Popeyes, we'll bring it out and then Blue Wave and the car.
And then one other question, is the Macallan Street water line?
Yes.
When, I know that it says in here, we're waiting for surveys. How close are we to breaking ground? breaking ground?
We, let me, I'll have a schedule in this package next month for all the projects, and you can see it. Once we get the survey back, we probably have at least, because we haven't done anything about the survey. So we probably have, maybe 30, 60 days of designing, getting the package together, getting out to bid. Surveyors, we've gone back before multiple times, we should have that data, any day now, to get started. So we follow that timeline. So let's say we get it first February, we're done with the design by the end of March, we've been entered the month of April, contracts in the day, and then we're into construction.
Thirty-seven. It's a long process, we know. Any other questions? Thank you, Chris. I entertain a motion to approve the departmental reports, items five through 13.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Carol, we'll have a second.
Second.
Second by Cheryl. Motion's debatable, minimal, requires a majority vote, all in favor of approving departmental reports, items five through 13, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we will approve the report. Executive session adjourned into closed session in compliance section 551.001, Texas Government Code, with 551.072, deliberation regarding real property. It is 7:10, and we are adjourned into executive session.
Good, Cheryl.
It is 7:57, and we are now back in the session. Do we have any motions? If you not?
Nope. No action taken?
No action taken, and so council in.
So I have a couple items for council inquiry. One of them, they all have to do with ordinance updates or changes. The first one I want to talk about is our ordinance for our lot sizes in Montgomery. Currently states 75 feet. We have seen constant request for variance to that, so my suggestion is that we lower and make a minimum. And basically at that point, build to the, if you can't build to the minimum, don't come for a variant, right? So it's, it's at that point, so we're not constantly doing variance. The other one has to do with our, what was it? So we talked about it today a little bit with the alcohol changing the permits so it doesn't conflict. I believe our current ordinance says 10 o'clock is when alcohol has to be stopped being served in Montgomery. I would like to at least bring it to at some point discussion, that weekdays, like Monday through Saturday, be extended to midnight, change the ordinance. And I think that's it.
Okay. Any others? Okay, I just have some FYI, just so we're all on the same page. You're probably getting some questions about the void areas of the medians. Just remind people that that is planned for red pavers and a transition coming in from the east across to our city. So we're all on the same page with that, and we do anticipate that moving relatively soon, and that is a part of the M E D C plan and budget. This past Friday, myself and Mr. Palmer had a good meeting with Text Dot. We hope we get a little bit more on a Text Dot, but this was primarily associated with the western movement from Plantersville all the way in. You've been aware, that project is mainly widening, but it also includes a transition walking system from, for our intents and purposes, from Lone Star into Cedar Brick Park. Nice 10 foot wide, gonna be a great thing, right? There's no lighting. It's dark on the west side. Being as old, they impressed upon us, and I shared this with the engineer earlier, that you do these agreements, what do we call them?
It's just an F I, funding agreement.
Yeah, but also the inter-local type agreements that we would typically do with the county happens at a snail's pace. With Text Dot, it's more like molasses and snails going through molasses maybe? That was what I was gathering from that. So with that said, they're going out for bids on this western into our town in 2025. Here we said 2023. And I'm just asking our powers that be to get on it, put our request in for lighting. And because it's as dark as it can be on the west side, it makes no sense to transition with walking spaces and everybody's expected to walk in the dark. That's a complex issue, I know, but I just wanted administration to know that and councils know that we're on that ahead of time. All right? And with that, entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, 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 thank you. And the stinky sitting right there. Hurry, opportunities are running out soon. If you don't, if you don't put in, or come to the city and get an application to run for seats number one, three, or five, you will miss out on that opportunity. And so we do want to reach out to people who would like to serve in that capacity. Positions one, three, and five are open. That deadline is February 18th to file, so you would need to come in sometime before that date. Thank you for that.
The voice, the scouts that were here, we did not introduce them, did we?
I'm sorry for that, my apologies.
Right, I forgot.
They were taking notes and just observing.
Yeah.
But yeah, you're right, I should've.
We should've acknowledged them.
My apologies.
Okay.
All right. Any others? Now I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn this meeting?
A second.
A second.
And all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone no, you must be crazy. And it is 8:02.